Well, the August 6 meeting of the Board of Trustees for Pasadena Area Community College District come to order. And at this time, I would like to call Chuck Farrell, who is of our Veterans Program, and he's going to be leaving for three months to provide medic training for Native Americans. And then he's off to Madagascar on a medical research project, and we're very honored to have you today. And would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you for being here, and thank you for all you do. I also would like, at this time, to introduce, and our audience were very honored this evening to have Petty Officer Second Class, who served in World War II, a vet who survived Iwo Jima and was part of the U.S. Saratoga. And his name is?
Caldwell.
Caldwell, Mr. Caldwell, would you please stand? Thank you for being here this evening. At this time, I'd like to have our attorney report on what happened in closed session.
There was no reportable action in closed session, President Fellow. However, Consent Item 17P is modified to pull the Dean of Student Life position.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have some introductions and some recognitions.
Yes, thank you very much, President Fellow. I would first like to introduce some new members of our staff, and one member of our staff who we are happy to say received a very well-deserved promotion, Dr. Cynthia Levo, our Associate Vice President of Student Affairs. Congratulations. I would also like to, on behalf of the staff and the board, welcome Dr. Kathleen Scott, who is our new Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs. Also, on behalf of the staff and the board, I'd like to welcome Dr. Ryan Corner, who is the new Associate Vice President of Strategic Planning and Innovation. We're very honored to have these three superb people as part of the PCC team and family. Now, I'd like to introduce, if I may, President Fellow Suzanne Trowbridge, who is with Keenan and Associates. Suzanne is a Vice President for Property and Casualty, and she's going to present, or a colleague is going to present, an award to Ruben Smith and Jack Schulman regarding our statewide educational wrap-up program, which is the program that deals with owner-controlled insurance for property liability, workers' comp, builders indemnity, and things like that. Suzanne?
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to turn this over immediately to Joanne Campus, our Senior Loss Control Consultant, that worked with the team during the construction of the Center of the Arts.
Thank you. Yes, I'm the Loss Control Consultant that worked with your team for the Center of the Arts. This project was a $28.2 million project over a 36-month period involving 335,000 worker hours. The SOUP Board would like to recognize the following individuals for their safety record. That project had a workers' compensation loss ratio of 4.26 percent. No general liability losses and no property losses to date. So for their outstanding safety performance, we'd like to recognize Ruben Smith, Director of Facilities with your college, Jack Schulman, the Measure D Project Manager, and Mark Reggitt, the Director of Business Services with Kemp Brothers, the general contractor. So on behalf of the SOUP JPA, we'd like to thank you for running such a superb project and your safety record.
That's it, President Fellow. Thank you very much.
Ms. Brown, do you have something to say?
Yes, actually, I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate the Radiology Technology students. I understand that all of the students passed their American Registry Board, and I was so excited. So, Dr. Barbara Friund, I would like to congratulate you for a good job in making sure that our students were able to achieve their outcomes.
And Ms. Brown, we now turn to public comments on non-agenda items. Is there any?
We have no comments on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll have approval of minutes, and we'll begin with the regular business meeting of the Board for June, July 16, 2014, and the wishes of the Board.
Move approval.
A second? We have approval from Dr. Mann and a second from Ms. Brown. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous vote, including the student trustee. We will now have a special meeting for July 22nd, approval of minutes, the wishes of the Board.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann, and I will second that motion. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Oh, due respect, Mr. Fellow, I don't think you were there, were you?
No, but I could...
You can second if you aren't there.
Yeah. I can even vote for it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, including the student trustee.
President, that was an abstention. I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you. And one abstention by the student trustee. We will now have approval of the consent items. Is there anything that needs to be pulled this evening? Dr. Mann?
28B, please.
Yes, 20B and 26B.
20B and 26B.
And?
29B? Okay, let's look at...
And?
Pardon?
And I had a couple of questions on 23B.
23B. And let's start with your questions first on 23B.
On 23B, page 3 of 4, I'm just curious if, when I was looking at the Pasadena Municipal, down at the very bottom of the page, Pasadena Municipal Services, Pasadena Municipal Services, Southern California Gas, looking at this, if this is a purchase order for one time period for the electricity, do we get to float for a year? We just pay them at the end of the year for electricity?
Ruben, if you could speak to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
This is actually a purchased order for approval for the whole year, so it's not a one-time purchase. It's actually given us authorization to pay the bills every month.
It's a little steep for a monthly, okay?
Yeah, no, exactly. These are annual. All three of these are annual at the moment, sir.
Well, a year ago, I think we were $1,009,000. Has it gone down, electric?
What we have is, we're actually more efficient now because of some of the Prop. 39 and other energy-efficient projects that we've done. So you're recognizing that there are some savings based on some of those projects that we have and projected out what we need to, what we used last year opposed to, and in previous years.
Yeah, I had done some analysis in connection with the City of Pasadena proposed electric power rate increases for the Chamber of Commerce last month or so, and I just happened to notice that we're the number five or something consumer of electricity in the city, and it was a $1,009,000, so it looks like we're saving some money there. And then, on the, on page 4 of 4, Identity Services Fund, $125,000 is what we pay to have fingerprints checked, why?
Yes, that's correct. We have, we have two ways in which we do background checks. One is LifeScan, and the other is we do background checks through a separate background check company, and unfortunately, it does cost that amount.
This was for the state of California?
Right, that's our LifeScan, Department of Justice.
Okay, this is through somebody else?
Right.
I thought the payee was the, the vendor name was the Department of Justice. Well, how many people do we run through a check approximately?
You know, it varies from month to month, but it's into the thousands during certain years. It could get very, very high.
Okay, that's it?
Thank you. Now, we'll turn to 20B, which deals with contracts.
Yes, on page 4 of that, under Restricted Fund Ratify, there are, it looks like, three new people being hired, $12,000, $12,000, and $60 per hour, not to exceed $6,000. I don't know, all in connection with the Small Business Development Center. We've been asking for a business plan on that center for almost two years, going back to before the director of it was even hired, and we never have gotten anything on that. And I don't understand why we're, if we're hiring people or whatever this really is, why we're doing that. We don't know, at least I don't know, and I don't think any of the Board have any information as to whether this place has got a revenue stream, whether it's losing money, or what's happening. Until we have that, I am not prepared to support bringing new people on.
Yes, I would also like to comment on that, as I was one of the trustees who also had questions on the Small Business Center. Trustee Thompson is correct that we have been requesting some, a business development plan and a projection of what is going to be needed to maintain this, what are our outcomes, our expected outcomes. And I know, Dr. Miller, you're very familiar with this, and you're very sensitive to the issue. I do feel hesitant to approve any additional resources until we get that plan. I think it's, I think that we need to know what this trajectory is going to look like, what we can expect.
Is there any reason we have not been presented with a business plan for this project?
I really can't answer that question, Mr. Thompson, but I do understand the Board's desire for one, and staff has been in discussion about bringing that to the Board at the next Board meeting.
I would like to have this one issue, the, potentially, these three people held until we get the business plan and see what's happening.
Thank you. Now, we will turn to 28B.
28B?
26B, I think.
26B, excuse me.
Yeah. And this, again, on page 2, Restricted Fund 03, the person who, I believe, heads up the Small Business Development Center is going to a conference in Texas that we're paying money for. And again, I would like to defer approving that or having to vote on that until we have a business plan and we know really what's happening over there, what we're doing, how it's making money, if it's making money, how much it's losing, or whatever the facts are. I don't see why we're sending somebody off to Texas for a conference, wherever Grapevine, Texas may be, until we know that it's really going to be an operation that is sustainable. Again, I would like to defer that until we have the business plan presented.
Okay, we will now have, turn to 28B.
Yes, I had asked, I was going to ask that this be discussed separately at the last meeting, then it was pulled. But my question is, we're paying to, spending $217,758 for a sunshade structure, which looks to me like it will be for temporary buildings, and I have heard from several faculty and staff in this area who feel that this is extravagant and that we could do the same thing with umbrellas and use that money to pay, hire more faculty, or, you know, get tutors, or whatever, put it more directly into the instructional program. So I would like to know what this is for and why we're spending this kind of money for something that is temporary.
So, if you may, if I may, President Fellow, I'll start with a brief explanation, and then I'll ask Executive Director Smith to come up to the podium and to add anything that may be needed. The Science Village, this is actually funding for three areas of the campus. Science Village on the corner of Del Mar and Bonny. For the past three years, the summers have been really quite brutal because there is no shade there for students for, either as they come out between classes or as they study and do the things. So the faculty in the Science Village has, for several years now, been requesting some form of relief. The Z Building is the building where our Visual Arts and Media Studies Ceramics faculty create ceramics and pots, and they're outside a lot, and there is no shade over in that area either. So we were going to resolve that issue. And then, finally, the G Building is the, is the old art gallery, which is now a conference center, and there's a patio area out there that we were thinking about putting up some heavy-duty sun sailcloth material, if you will, that is compliant with DSA requirements and what have you. Unfortunately, due to load requirements, health and safety requirements, what have you, if we're going to do something like that, we have to be, we have to get through DSA approvals. We say temporary, but in reality, we really mean at least five to 10 years of useful life on the basis of the structures and what have you. So this is really about providing relief from sun and providing more and more students study areas. As you know, the world has gone mobile, and so more and more students are doing work outside on their laptops, their iPads, their mobile devices. I don't know, Mr. Smith, briefly, if there's anything that I've left out, if you could respond, please.
Yes, the Division State Architect requires fire and life safety, and what's included in that is the wind loads and fire retardant. So the challenge that we have is, it's a little more expensive for some of these sunscreen and shades because we want to make sure that they are fire-retardant in case of a fire, and then we don't have the same issues that reoccur again when we get a 90 mile an hour windstorm like we had that destroyed the banana tree, and we had to, you know, go through that process. Someone could have been hurt. So that's why we're going through this process with the sunscreen, to ensure that we don't have any fire life safety issues. Also included is, we will provide tables with umbrellas, and those umbrellas will have solar charging stations for the students to use their laptops and to use their iPad and whatever devices that they'd like to outside. We're also providing that as well, various areas throughout the campus.
Thank you.
To answer the questions?
Yes, ask about the cost, because I had put up a sunshade over a pretty large area, but I didn't, it wasn't wind resistant. All right.
Thank you.
So the umbrellas, you're saying, with the tables, those are in a different location than the actual sunshade? Are you saying they're in conjunction with?
Well, it's going to be in conjunction with. Where we, where we can create, reach the span large enough to provide the most amount of shade, to give everybody a little bit of that shade equity, we're going to put in the large screens. Where we have some of the smaller areas where students study, where we think that it's a little cheaper and more economical, we're putting in the umbrella tables.
With the charging stations, worth their weight in gold, as people know.
Okay, thank you very much. And the final item tonight is 29B. Questions?
Yes, on the, I'm a big supporter of CMAS and CupCA contracting, so I do think that saves the district some money in having to go out for competitive bids. But two things, I think the limits on this are raised. Is that right, Dr. Miller? And I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to read your, the memo that you referred to until I got, I just saw it here. So we're looking at different limits. And then the other question I have is, while I think it's important that we have these standard contracts, especially, you know, it serves the district well when we need to get services immediately, competitive processing could be, competitive bidding could be time-consuming. I also wonder, is there any way that we track whether or not there are local businesses under those contracts that are also receiving any of these awards?
I'm going to ask the, our Director of Contracts and Purchasing and Contracts Administration to come up, Mr. Chudieck, but I'm going to answer that no at the moment because this is new, but there will be going forward. We do track very readily the number of local vendors and suppliers that we use and try to use whenever we can, vendors and suppliers within the district. We've also had a number of, at least two or three in the last three years that I can think of, fairs, if you will, inviting local businesses into the campus and the like. But specifically, we can track that. George, I don't know if you want to add anything to that or not?
Yes, by adopting the California Uniform Public Construction Accounting Act, we are required actually to pre-qualify contractors and subcontractors. So we would be tracking these vendors or contractors on a yearly basis, and we'll keep documentation for, to that effect.
And am I correct in reading that we're asking for an increase, we're raising the ceiling now on the CupCA approvals, or did I read that correctly?
Yes, in the supporting information that we provided the Board tonight, and I apologize that it just got to you tonight, we refer you back to an action that the Board took on August 24th of 2013. It was Consent Item 30B, and in there, it has a chart, which is a process comparison between what we are currently doing and what CupCA would allow us to do. And so you'll see the bid increases.
Yes, that is, these are the established limit by the commission. We don't change them, we don't choose to change them. They are established by the commission, we just follow their recommendation.
Ms. Brown?
I do have one question that hopefully you can answer. I think this is definitely something that we need to do as far as expediting contractors and what have you. I do agree with Justy Wa that we should have a mechanism in place to track local contractors, but as written this resolution, I'm a little uncomfortable with the fact that we will be allowing as much as $175,000 to be expelled without us seeing the Board, without it coming to the Board. Now, how much delay, once you go through your lists, because the list is already there, and you're engaging XYZ individual, how difficult is that to bring it back to the Board for us to know that they're engaging XYZ, or is this just an overkill? Please help me understand that.
Well, a couple of benefits of adopting the Act is expediting the process, expediting the bidding process to support facilities and their construction projects. And the main difference between the informal bidding act, which falls under the CupCA, and the formal bidding is, we are not really required to put an ad in the paper for two weeks, and we are not required to take it to Board for approval. It doesn't change the fact that if a Board wishes to see those contracts and approval, they still can go back and get submitted to the Board. But part of the intent of the Act is to speed up the process, and if we choose to bring it to the Board, we can do so.
I understand all what you said, but my question is, once you identify three people that you want, or one or two, how difficult is that? How much delay will that be for, to just have the Board see it? Is that too much?
I guess it depends on the timing and when the award is made, and we just, we just have...
If I may, it could be anywhere from two weeks to six weeks, eight weeks, depending on when the Board meetings are scheduled and when we get in on the docket and those types of things.
Dr. Mann?
Well, we have a Board policy that says that any contract over, I think it's $1,000, has to be approved by the Board. So this is in direct conflict with our own policy. So I, thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Brown, I had, I had not realized that in reading this. So I cannot support this. I think we, if you look at what's happened with other public agencies in this city, with contracts going up to $180,000, $170,000, I think we should continue to approve anything over, and I think it is $1,000, is it not, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
That anything over $1,000 comes to the Board, and if it slows it down, then the Board needs to maybe meet more frequently, and we need to find a way of speeding up our process. It was my understanding with our new computer system that we would be, would be able to get this. I am uncomfortable of letting, of changing that limit and of change, we'd have to change our policy, which we can do, but I would not support that at all.
So if I may, and certainly if this is the pleasure of the Board, we're fine with it as a staff, I just want to remind the Board that a year ago, August 21st, you did approve us moving forward with the CupCA concept, and this is sort of the second step of, I think, a three-step process. That being said, you certainly can, you know, change your minds now, and we're, we will work with whatever parameters that you want us to work within.
But it do, can't you move forward with the process and just have it in there that the Board has to approve it? I mean, the whole thing about your bidding and so forth, you could do all of that.
We can certainly do that, Dr. Mann, thank you. Yes, we could.
Ms. Wa.
So perhaps one way to address this, too, would be to allow the administration to move forward with the bidding and then bring their top three recommendations back to either the Budget and the Finance Committee, and then let them make the recommendations and bring it back to the entire Board.
I'm looking at George, and he's nodding his head affirmatively, so I think the answer is, we can certainly do that. We can, we can, we can move forward in that manner if that's, if that's what the Board wants us to do.
That's okay, Dr. Mann.
I'm not exactly, she had her head turned. I didn't exactly hear what she said, sorry.
Bring it back to the Budget and Finance Committee.
I want it to come back to the Board.
If I may, Trustee Mann, you're absolutely correct, and nothing about what's before you eliminates the process of bringing a contract to the Board. This procedure is designed to circumvent what we've had to do historically, which is come to the Board for the authorization to go out to bid, then to go out to bid, then to bring the contract back after the bid is awarded. So what it avoids is those first two steps, but nothing about this procedure would say that we would not come to the Board for the fiscal authority to enter into the contract with the contractor who's...
Right, and we would bring three bids back.
If that's what it means, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we, what we will do. I think...
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wa, for clarifying that.
The way that was just explained was what I understood it to be. I've been a construction contracting officer going way back, or a long time ago, sort of that way, and I'm familiar with this sort of thing, and so I don't have a problem with this. When it's brought to the Board, we just need to identify that it was done under this particular process. One other thing, I, I was trying to sort of figure out this second page here on the document that we got tonight, this matrix that explains what the difference is and all that. And these are really, really helpful, and please try and give us these ahead of time.
Yeah.
Because I was trying to sort this out just from the brief thing that was in there, and I was going to ask questions until I saw this, but...
I need to take full responsibility for this because this is one of those, I woke up in the middle of the night and realize, you know what, we didn't give enough information on 29B. So that's why we did what we did today, so I apologize for that.
We were channeling.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we have the consent items to approve, and at 20B, we will hold the SBDC expenditures for the three personnel items. For 26B, we will hold the SBDC expenditures... For 26B, we will hold the SBDC expenditures, and 29B will move forward with the bidding process.
President Phil, you'll want to modify the last paragraph of 29B to reflect that, where it says, "Without further authorization of the governing board," that that is modified to say, "With authorization of the governing board."
That doesn't need to be modified, thank you, Ms. Kuehl.
With that, I'll accept a motion to approve.
So, move.
We have a motion from Ms. Wa, a second from Ms. Brown. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries with student trustee in the affirmative. Okay, we'll now turn to our Veterans Village, and Ms. Wa, we have a number of comments this evening. Comments will be limited to three minutes.
So, we have five speakers on this item. I'll read off the first three, so please line up. Denise Wadsworth, Chuck Farrell, and Eric Quiros. I want to welcome Ms. Wadsworth, who is from Area 5, a great supporter of the veterans.
Good evening, PCC leadership. Last October, a number of San Marino and Altadena Rotarians got together with Dr. Martin to talk about job development and entrepreneurial skills, and how to actually write a business plan. That's what our interest was, and out of that discussion came more talks about what was needed here on PCC's campus. From there, we had Patty Martin come over to our San Marino Rotary and share with us all the great information about what you are doing here to support one of our most important, or, in my heart, the most important subset of PCC, our veterans and our military personnel. I'm here tonight to thank you for providing us the support that we need. We will not forget this. As you need our help, as the Rotary Clubs in District 5300 can help you, we will be there. I'm very, very interested in helping our vets here and our students here with getting back to civilian status and then becoming gainfully employed, because as it stands, we have 35,000 vets returning, and if we don't find jobs for them, we are anticipating challenges in our communities. That being said, I want to make sure that we simply thank Dr. Martin, Patty Martin, Terry Powell, Congresswoman Senator, I'm sorry, Senator Judy Chu, and Enrique Robles, who works in her office, and, most importantly, you, for providing us the space that we need to help this subset of our population. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we have our next speaker, I just want to explain to the audience that what we're talking about tonight is a recommendation by the board to authorize the Pasadena City College Veterans Resource Center to partner with the Veterans Administration, the Greater Los Angeles Healthcare System, to open a Veterans Village, which would also include a health clinic. Thank you.
Chuck Farrell?
Hello, thank you. I wanted to let you know, as a PCC veteran, student veteran and success story, just what additional resources would mean to us. I wandered into Patty Martin's office in 2011 with a DD-214, and a dream to be a nurse, and that's all I had. I didn't know how I was going to accomplish those goals, I didn't know what direction or even how to begin. And I graduated from the PCC Nursing RN Program in May. I'm waiting on my authorization to test, but I was set up for complete success by our program here. I anticipate being able to take my NCLEX and passing without any problems. I'm transferring to Cal State LA now. I was able to do all of this while still serving in a reserve unit. I'm a medic with the 349th Army Reserve Combat Support Hospital. And the veterans' resources that we have here have helped me, and they've helped all of the other veterans. And the, I apologize, the services offered to us, not only in academic counseling, but the student tutoring, and Carol Colander, our social worker, they really address individual veteran needs in a way that the VA simply fails us. And so, without the veteran's support that we receive here, most of us would not be as successful as we are. So, just keep that in mind with the approval for the Veterans Village. We put it to good use, and we'll make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Mr. Quiros, Mark Cassidy on, and Magdalena Castillo Torres.
Hi, yes, I'm a student veteran, and I just want to talk on behalf of other student veterans. I think we'd be more likely to attend Pasadena City College if we had a centralized VA facility like that's being proposed in the VA Village. I, myself, am a disabled veteran. I have conditions with my leg, and it's hard for me to go down personally to downtown LA to go and see clinics and things like that because of mobility issues sometimes. So, having the facilities here on campus would mean a world to me personally and other veterans like myself. Just, the services that we provide for the veterans here on campus are simply amazing. Transitioning from the military into civilian life can be tough, and I think we do a great job here on campus in helping veterans come back into the society as a whole. And I think the Veterans Village is really going to be something that will increase that and really help the community at large, and really have more veterans want to come down and attend Pasadena City College, because right now, I believe we have veterans that are traveling upwards of 30, 40 miles sometimes to come to this campus, just due to our veteran facilities that we offer. And I think that a partnership with the VA and Veterans Village would just make a world of difference to a lot of people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark, and up until the end of summer term, I was a full-time student, I am still a full-time student. I also worked here as a student worker. On average, my days were 12 hours here at the school. Being a chemical engineer, I was reluctant to miss out on some of the very important classes I have to take. It was a tough choice between going 30 miles downtown to get to a VA clinic and trying to get my college education done. With this clinic here, none of us will have to make that tough choice of whether we do this or seek the help that we need. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Magdalena. I'm a PC veteran student here. I do go full-time to school. I'm also a single mother, and when I first got here back in 2010, and I first met Patty DeOrange, she helped me a lot, especially during some very emotional events that I went through. But due to the fact that I don't have a car, and I also have four children, it is very difficult for me to go all the way to downtown or West LA clinic just to make my appointment. There was an incident, not last semester, where I suffered a headache, a major headache, that they thought I was bleeding from my head during one of my classes, and just trying to get an appointment to see a neurologist takes forever. So, if we had the clinic here, it'd be easier for me to go in and get checked out than wait three weeks just to get an appointment to get seen. So, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all. We do have a presentation. I would like it to be the major points, we don't need to go through 20 slides, okay? Thank you.
Dr. Phil, can I ask one question? My understanding, the recommendation, as you read, is to partner with Veterans Administration and Center of Los Angeles Healthcare System to open a Veterans Village. Is that really what we're being asked to authorize this evening?
Yeah, this is what the background indicates, but more specifically, what we're, we have an issue, it's a conceptual issue. And the issue is, we've got some entities here that are willing to do some significant fundraising in order to bridge the gap between the district resources that we can bring to the table if the board so chooses, and what is necessary to finalize the project. So, it's important for the community and the staff to have an understanding from the board if they are in support of this concept, enough to say to the partners that, yes, please go do your fundraising and move forward. And I think that's the issue before you, Mr. Thompson.
Well, that's a little bit different than just saying we're an open one, because I think fundraising and the money to do it is really the critical issue. I have no problem whatsoever with the concept. And my understanding is that, and correct me if I'm mistaken on this, Dr. Leavio, but my understanding is, other places that have tried this have had them for a few years, and they close up because the money dries up. And so, that's all I want to make sure, is that we're not just saying we're going to go ahead and open this regardless of what happens. We need to get the money and be able to then open it, but we can't commit to opening before the money is in hand.
Yeah, the presentation speaks to the sustainability and the commitments that the VA is willing to, the Veterans Administration of Greater Los Angeles branch is willing to commit to this. So, that's part of it. And I think, Dr. Leavio, if you can do this briefly to get to the heart of the matter, and then we can perhaps have a conversation after that, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Certainly. Good evening, board members, audience members. I'd like to introduce our partners in this project. From our very own college, our Dean of Health Sciences, Dr. Barbara Freund. From the Veterans Administration of Greater Los Angeles Healthcare System, we have Eric And from Congresswoman Judy Chu's office, we have Enrique Robles. Essentially, I'd also like to recognize Patty DeOrange Martin, our Coordinator of the PCC Veterans Resource Center. Essentially, it was through Patty's networking that she was able to identify this potential partnership. And what it is, is we were already planning on expanding the existing Veterans Resource Center, which is 900 square feet. And for the nearly 900 veterans on campus, it was too small. We've already outgrown the space. So, we're talking about going from 900 square feet to 1,900 square feet, and the VA was looking to engage with a community college to offer clinic services at a college site. And so, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to look at our existing plan to expand the Veterans Resource Center and simply create another space for a clinic. And so, you already heard some of the reasons from our student veterans why this would be beneficial. Some of the other reasons would be that this clinic could serve as a host for PCC allied health students to conduct their clinical rotation hours right here on campus.
Dr. Leavio, why don't you advance the slides as you go, so people can follow what's going on?
Sure. So, as I stated, we want to take advantage of our existing plan to increase the size of the VRC, provide comprehensive services to veterans to address not only their educational needs, but also their health and wellness needs, increase the use of health and wellness services by placing a clinic right here on campus rather than having students commute to LA, provide the opportunity for allied health students to conduct their clinical rotation hours here at PCC, collaborate with other academic departments so that students can also conduct internships in the VA clinic, and meet the needs of family members of veterans in the San Gabriel Valley to potentially also introduce them to the idea of enrolling here at PCC. The VRC expansion costs are at $400,000. We've already identified $350,000 from the facilities budget, and the Veterans Resource Center put aside $50,000 to contribute to the VRC expansion. As I mentioned, the idea is to also create a space for the clinic. That would cost $250,000. And we have community organizations who are willing to fundraise for that amount. The operational budget for this clinic includes a staff. Of course, if you're going to offer medical services, you need the medical staff to do it. The VA of Greater Los Angeles is prepared to provide close to $600,000 annually to have a care site manager, a physician, or high-level nurse practitioner, a registered nurse, and mental health providers such as a psychologist, psychiatrist, or mental health social worker, as well as a nurse assistant and a clerk. They will provide medical supplies, hazardous waste disposal, provide a telehealth program, create their own internet, and provide their own computers. This is for patient privacy. We would provide custodial support and utilities. And the clinical site would provide rotation hours for nursing students, for our students in the medical assisting program, and those enrolled in the dental assisting and dental hygiene program. And that is close to 300 students per semester who could conduct their clinical rotation hours there. The idea behind the village is that students will continue to receive their services that they get now in the VRC. This includes training for faculty and staff, meetings with the vocational rehab counselor, the Veterans Club holds their meeting there, we have a veterans' learning community, tutoring, coaching, and educational counseling. The kinds of services the clinic would provide include basic primary medical care for common illnesses, chronic disease, appropriate preventative health services and screenings, coordination of care that's to be provided in other clinical settings, patient education on maintaining health, mental health services, including psychiatry, psychology, or social work, and integrative health and healing therapies such as acupuncture, Tai Chi, yoga, and meditation, and mental health services for family members. There is also a need for women's health programs, and so, all of those services that I just listed would be tailored specifically for women. I don't know if you caught the news last week, but $54.6 billion was just recently approved at the federal level to be available for grant funding, and we feel as though this clinic and Veterans Village will position us to be a major competitor for those grants. And just recently, Dr. Barbara Freund led a successful effort to get a Vets to Nurses Grant of $90,000, which we were just awarded in July 2014. As I mentioned, we need $250,000 in order to make this a reality, and we do have our partners, Dave Loera from the Veterans of Foreign War, Gene Sacco from the Pasadena American Legion, and Ron Hansel from Disabled American Veterans, as well as Rotarians and Kowanians who have committed to helping us in the effort to raise this $250,000. Now, they've been itching to go and conduct the fundraising already, and I needed to be here before you, before we could give them the green light to go and help raise these funds. The location for this clinic would be in Parking Lot 3. And we feel this is an appropriate space because of the easy egress and degress from the street, from Hill Avenue. And then also, this spot has been utilized for tractor trailers, and during the construction of the Center for the Arts, was taken offline from parking services. So, we feel that this would be a good spot. The potential number of clients that could be served in this clinic, I asked our partner, Enrique, to pull the data from the congressional districts, and there are nearly 20,000 to 30,000 veterans in the San Gabriel Valley. That's between Congresswoman Chu's area and Congresswoman Grace Napolitano's area. But the Veterans Administration of Greater Los Angeles Healthcare System estimates that approximately 4,000 to 5,000 individual veterans per year would utilize these services, and this is based upon the data from business flow at other community-based outpatient clinics. And this is based upon the data from business flow at other community-based outpatient clinics. Congresswoman Judy Chu is committed to providing us with, you know, a really great relationship to those federal dollars that might be available to support some of the programming that could occur in this clinic in the future. And in terms of sustainability, the VA has indicated that based upon the number of patients served, that is how they can ensure the VA will continue to provide the $600,000 per year for the medical staff. And then we would propose to enter into a five-year agreement with PCC. And there are other models that exist in other campuses. The program is called VITAL, and it's specifically mental health care that is provided by the VITAL program. I provided you a link so that you could take a look at those other models that exist. PCC would be the first program of this kind that would offer basic medical care and the chronic disease care and the extensive services that you heard some of our veterans describe that they need. And Donna Bider, who is the Registered Nurse and Director of the VA Greater Los Angeles Healthcare System, provided us this quote to indicate that this is the future of healthcare, to integrate where the community exists so that it's a very seamless effort on behalf of patients to be able to receive the care they need. And then it's not just going to a doctor when you have a cold or when you're already sick. It's providing the health and wellness care needed to prevent disease and illness from occurring in the first place. So we, we really do feel as though this would be a great opportunity for us. As many of you participated in the Centennial Master Planning Sessions, one of the ideas that emerged was that PCC would, in the future, create this integrated model where we would have a hospital-like setting for students to learn and provide that kind of service to the community. So it's active learning. And we do have that model at this point on campus with our dental hygiene clinic. We do have many members of the community who come from the surrounding area to receive free and low-cost dental care. And so this would just be another iteration of that. So our next steps would be board approval, and then I provided you copies of the flyer for fundraising efforts. As I mentioned, our partners are ready to help us in this regard. And then we would proceed with the VRC expansion with the potential to open this Veterans Village in summer of 2015.
Thank you very much. Questions by the board? Mr. Lewis?
Dr. Levo, so if I read this correctly, bottom line is, was there already the $400,000 set aside for the VRC expansion?
That is correct.
So what we're talking about here is just giving up the space, not any more money than was already allocated?
What we're talking about here is for the board to authorize us to engage in this partnership, and then we will fundraise for the $250,000 that is needed to finalize this project.
And actually, just a point of clarity here, we actually budgeted roughly $150,000 to $200,000 for the VRC expansion. This would require us, in terms of where we're locating it, to do more site planning and work with the DSA and bring in other infrastructure required. So just a, just a small clarification there.
And, and the, the cost after the initial cost? I know you'd said earlier custodial, but how much is that?
It would be, it's hard to figure, but it would be relatively minor because it's, the staff is here, this would just be added to their, their rotation. So it would, in a sense, it would not be additional cost. We might have to bring on some hourly to help, but, but nothing appreciable.
Any other questions?
In terms of the location, Dr. Levo, at one point, weren't we looking at the CEC area over on Foothill as a possible location for this?
To my knowledge, our primary area of interest would be the main campus where the 900 veterans attend school. And so the Community Education Center, I believe, is utilized 100% of the existing space.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that a little bit. There are two issues with the Community Education Center. The, the concept here is to merge the Veterans Resource Center and the clinic together to provide a broader array of services. The majority of our veterans, the vast majority of our veterans, you know, are here on our campus. So the consideration of moving the center over there to the CEC is probably, is somewhat inconsistent with the programmatic needs of the current veterans program that we have now. That's one issue. Second issue is, as I think many of you are aware, the Community Education Center is on Southern California Edison land, and we have certain restrictions from Southern California Edison in terms of what we can do there. And having worked with them before, this may be an issue in terms of putting these four modulators there relative to the needs that the Edison would require, and the likelihood of them approving it is probably not great. And third, as I look at Dr. Freund and I look, I don't know if Dr. Ariano is here, but the thought of adding more to that campus right now might be more than she could bear, let alone her faculty at this point. It's just very, very loaded.
May I follow up on that a little bit? That's a good explanation. I appreciate that. And maybe I'm misinterpreting your map here, but it looks like we're going to be putting us into a very, very small space. If this is successful, as we certainly hope it will be and expect it to be, we're going to need more space. I think you said we were going to have, what, room for 1,900 people?
1,900 square feet.
What?
1,900 square feet. The Veterans Resource Center will go from 900 square feet to 1,900 square feet.
Yeah, but how many people we're going to be serving in this?
4,000 to 5,000 in one year.
Okay, it is.
What I can do if it's, right before the meeting, Executive Director Smith provided some site plans for that space. And I'll pass these around, but what it indicates is that there is enough space for these four modulators plus the needed parking that's required. The truth of the matter, though, Mr. Thompson, to get to the point of your, of your question, is that eventually and relatively quickly, we will outgrow that space. And the reality of the situation is, is that the clinic will have to be the size that the clinic is until such time as our, that our Centennial Facilities Master Plan might indicate the need for a, a larger Health Sciences building, which might result in the construction of a building, which if Dr. Freund and her faculty were able to move forward with their vision, the whole first floor of that new building would be a community clinic. So that would be, but that's obviously many years down the road, and that's getting the cart way up before the horse because the board hasn't even considered such a thing.
That's wild.
Well, first, you know, I, since I am a fellow Rotarian, I also want to thank Ms. Wadsworth, who, when they came to the San Marino Rotary, she's like a woman on fire and went out to everybody and called Congresswoman Chu's office and got everyone on board. So, you know, I do have to say, I think that certainly people in my community are very much interested in finding a way to help. And I think that's what we're being asked. So for clarification, we are just being asked to allow the staff to go out, to fundraise, to get support. And then particulars of this, will it be brought back to the board? What the facilities actually look like? Whether or not this is the right location? What other issues that we may encounter?
Yes, that's correct, Trustee Wad. I think what's important here is that the board gives some indication of their serious interests so that our fundraising partners, should they go out and, and do what they need to do and bring the $250,000 to us, that there is some expectation that the board will strongly consider this when we bring more details to you.
And I want to clarify, is there, so once we do the fundraising for the initial facilities investment, the only ongoing cost we have is the $600,000, or the budget is $600,000 from the VA, and that's what we expect to fit within?
Yes, ma'am. The only additional cost would be the cost of utilities to power the four modular units and the modest cost for custodial to clean. Ruben's giving me, what does that mean? About $10,000 a year is what Ruben is saying.
Ten, that's ten.
He said.
Ten, yes.
$10 a year.
Oh, $10, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
And just a question, what, what would happen if for some reason the clientele is greater than that capacity of 4,000 that we thought we could handle? Would we have a fallback position on it?
Eric? I do want to say while Eric is making his way to the podium, I did log into my email and pull up the renderings that Ruben sent me so that the audience can see where it would be situated.
Hi, my name is Eric Gutierrez, Office of Communications with the Department of Veterans Affairs. You know, that's a good question as far as, you know, what do we do when, when we exceed the 4,000? I think that's a good problem to have. So, you know, I, I think we would work with, with PCC and identify other, other ways of providing care to our patients. But I, I think we have to get reached to the first step of actually having a clinic here, which we are very excited about.
And then this, this follow-up question is for Dr. Freund. So first, I want to thank Dr. Freund and congratulate you on renewing your contract with the Arcadia Methodist. So by having the access for our students for clinical work, does this resolve some of those issues that we heard that allied health was facing and finding placements for our students?
It certainly does help us significantly, and not just with the nursing program, with the other programs as well. And all of you have heard the vision for quite some time now regarding the clinic that we were proposing that would help the community. And of course, the veterans are just one population that we would be serving. And I see this as a wonderful opportunity to pilot test it and see what the growth potential is and the, the size of the operation that we would eventually be offering. In terms of the educational opportunities, I mean, this is a model that has not been seen at other community colleges. There are veteran services, but it isn't something where we're actually having this fantastic opportunity for service learning where our students actually are able to be put in place. So just as the larger clinic vision, for me, this clinic is not just for the health science students as well. I mean, we put that little slide up there because obviously we can put my students in there, but I see it as an opportunity for the students throughout all of the different programs on campus, just like I had the vision for the, for the whole clinic. I mean, I've got a place for every student in every major, and it's just healthcare happens to be the framework for it, but it's an entire service learning model, and nobody else is doing that anywhere. So it's a fantastic opportunity for our students, and it's a wonderful way to address the healthcare needs of the, of the greater community.
Would this also allow us to give that one year of experience that keeps our nurses from getting out and getting jobs? Would that be a possibility also?
It's a, it's a perfect opportunity, and it's one of the certificates that I'm proposing that we move through a, and I'm calling it a Certificate of Clinical Residency Education, where our graduates would then be able to intern in these clinic-type settings and actually get some more independent experience. And it will be a very comfortable setting for them because they will have already rotated through as nursing students through the program. So it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for them. Again, it's also a wonderful opportunity for the other programs, medical assisting, getting their internships there, their externships. And depending on the types of services that we can expand, and I haven't had enough conversations yet with the, with the gentlemen from the VA, but we also have Rad Tech. And while we have fully operational x-ray equipment at the CEC campus, there may be an opportunity to have something also in the, the veterans clinic, in the Veterans Village as well. And so our Rad Tech students would be able to have experiences there, and we'd be able to provide, that's an additional service that they may not have thought we had the capabilities for yet. So they'd be able to have that experience as well. And as we, as we expand more of the healthcare programs on campus, again, this clinic is, is the, the model for which our students would be able to get the experience that they're going to need as healthcare delivery changes too. You know, we, we are at this, this wonderful, new opportunity to, to be entrepreneurial. We may even be able to bring in the Small Business Development Center with some of this in terms of having our students learn how to develop businesses that are going to be providing more care to people living.
Dr. Freund, I'm going to stop.
I'm sorry.
Because you can go on for an hour here.
I'm keeping going, I know.
We understand the passion for it.
I'll have you all on this.
We know, we know you're passionate.
Yes, exactly. So yes, your answer to the question, this is a fantastic opportunity for, for our students. And, you know, I'm ready to have them open the doors tomorrow because I've already got rotations I could put in there.
Thank you, Dr. Mann.
Yes, I, I just have just one very basic comment, which is, and I think people tend to forget this, with this wonderful veterans program, and when we first started, there were grants available from the state and from the federal government to establish it. We didn't get any of those grants. So the veterans program is funded by the college. And so everything that is there, although it's probably not as much as anyone would want, was, is already due to a commitment that the board has made. So I see this as a, as another step in that, in that direction. I get a little bit nervous when I hear people say, well, it was started with no funding. No, it wasn't started with no funding, it was started with our, with our funding. Granted that that closet that it was in was very, very small, and that we certainly need more space, more than one square foot per student. So I, I fully support this and very pleased.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. And we do appreciate the fact that the board made this a priority and provided funding and space from the beginning. So thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, yeah. So let me begin, and I'll try to be as clear as I can. So first of all, let me say that I have two sons that are in the service, first of all. The next thing I would like to say is that everything that has been said tonight is very good. I did speak to my brother-in-law, who does drive over to LA to get service. He's a, I guess he's a, what is he? I don't know where he, I think he was from Vietnam. And I did speak to my sister who work at the VA office because our hospital, which I was, I had some concerns, and I'm pretty much know what I want to say. Okay, so we are talking about trying to help the veterans, which I fully agree that the veterans need to have a place where they can have a clinic closer to where they travel. I have no problem with that. I'm a little uneasy with how monies are coming, like $350,000 that supposedly was in the budget. I don't know how that get there for facilities. One of the biggest uneasiness that I'm having is how a couple of years ago, we opened that CBC over at the Community Health Center, and to date, we still don't have a business plan. I'm kind of looking at this sort of that way. Numbers have been thrown out. I am not sure how it was processed. I don't know, it make, it just put out to sound good. I applaud you because you're here to support a good cause because the veterans deserve to be supported. My thing, I've been hearing about this when, since I went to, I think it was Washington. They've been talking about the need to have more clinics for veterans, and different colleges were talking about it. But I think PCC need to stick to what the mission is, which is to provide academics to our students. We do have other properties. We do have other locations. This could become quite big because if we have, I think we're talking about 5,000, but you know what? You probably will end up having more than 5,000. And I just can see it being chaotic, to be honest with you. So I would love for us to do something, this is me speaking, I would love for us to do something, look around in the close area, do the same partnering, but I really have a problem with it being on campus. And that's my thinking there.
And this, I'd like to talk now in this first round of questioning is, I agree with Ms. Brown. I have some problems bringing, you know, 4,000 students on campus. But what I'd like us to do is, I always like to think big, and, and I'm very much into satellite campuses. And for me, I would love to see a whole complex of moving the whole sciences, health sciences and this, to one area outside of campus, like in, in Arcadia off the goal line. Because I think we have to start thinking about public transportation. In 10 years, nobody's going to move anywhere in this city and, and on freeways. And so we have to think of, of these things. But I- But I think it's wonderful, and I'm all for it. But I'd like us to think a little bigger. I think we should look at the Annenberg Foundation, even, I think they may even want to put their name on this center and fund it, and the Kaiser Foundation. And so I'd like us to think about these things. And secondly, my question is, and again, I also want to say that when we talk about funds, if we do get going on this, I know Congresswoman Chu very much, she is not going to let the Small Business Center fail. She is not going to let this fail if it goes forward. The other question I have is, what, do we have to worry about malpractice insurance when we get into doctors and?
No, but I will let, very quickly, if you can respond to that.
Yeah, we'll let our partner at VA-
Right.
No, the federal government is self-insured, so any healthcare issues would be covered under the Torque Claims Act. And I think, to go back to your concern about 4,000 to 5,000 patients, we're talking about over the course of a year. You're not going to see an influx of 4,000 to 5,000 patients on day one. So obviously, we would ramp up. And that's a projection. I think that's a very generous projection to go to 4,000 to 5,000, because the previous clinic that we had in, on Las Tunas, we were about 800 to 900. So I think we would easily, you know, fit that patient population, but then also have opportunities to increase.
Okay, thank you. But again, I'd like to see us think about off-campus somewhere. Just, Mr. Thompson?
This, as certainly Patty Martin and Harold Martin know very well, last November 11th, on Veterans Day, the PCC Veterans Program was front and center for the celebration of the city in front of passing City Hall. The Passing of Veterans Committee had its first meeting a little over a week ago, where I presented the Veterans Village Proposal to the committee, and certainly in general, there's very strong support there for proceeding with this. And we're going to be planning the veterans program for this November as well, and looking to the passing of Hep Band once again to take part. And our veterans program will be front and center. So there's lots of support for this. We've heard lots of cautions or issues have to be addressed, but conceptually, I would be very supportive of this going forward, with the understanding that we're not authorizing a go-ahead particularly, but to go out and raise money to make this possible.
Okay, Ms. Savage?
Right, I've got a few questions. One, I'm still a little unclear about exactly what it is we're proposing, but I understand the name of it. We've now got 900 square feet for the Veterans Resource Center, and I've been there, and it's a beehive of activity, okay? And I know it ought to be bigger. So if we weren't even talking about this, if this idea, the clinic, didn't exist, what is it that we were expecting to do to expand?
Yes.
I'm asking this question because I want to compare, okay, with or without clinic. So without clinic, what would we have expected to?
In the W Building, which is where the Veterans Resource Center now is, there's a large storage room next to it that would require a great deal of rehabilitation and what have you. And there was a budget of upwards of what, $100,000, Ruben, as I recall, in order to make that occur?
$150,000.
$150,000 of what we were going to invest to expand. And how many square feet was that going to be, Ruben?
That would get us to roughly about 1,600, 1,700 square feet.
Right. So that was the expansion, that was the cost. The W Building is not one of our more stable buildings in some senses?
No, it's a part of our five-year plan. We're proposing to have seismic upgrades there because of some of the challenges we have. It's not a building that we have to vacate like we did the U Building, but it does require some upgrades. And so some of those upgrades would occur in that same area. So I, you know, I would recommend deferring until after we can seismically upgrade the building.
Right. But anyway, that's your answer, trustee South.
Okay, so we're talking about, we've got 900 square feet now. If we weren't talking about a clinic, we were talking about going up to 1,700.
Roughly, yes, sir. At a cost of approximately $150,000.
In a building that will need to be seismically upgraded.
That's a side matter.
Right.
But is it correct that we are talking about the Veterans Resource Center with the clinic, with the VA clinic component occupying 1,900 square feet?
No, I think the VRC itself would be-
Somebody said 1,900 square feet.
But I believe what they said was the VRC itself would be 1,900 square feet.
That is correct. The VRC would be 1,900 square feet, and the clinic would be roughly 1,000 square feet itself.
Okay. Let's see. So for the $400,000, we would get, meaning PCC would get, 1,900 square feet for the Veterans Resource Center and 1,000 square feet extra that could be used by the VA for its clinic operation.
That is essentially correct.
Okay.
But actually, but the total cost is around $600,000, give or take, and that's why we need the-
That is correct. The total build-out would be over $600,000.
Yeah, somewhere between 600 and 650,000 for all of the infrastructure and all the like that it would take.
I had misread the agenda. I thought people were talking about sticking it in that, what is a driveway between the parking, okay. So it's going to be in the parking lot. So it'll be, its footprint will be taking up, I don't know how many parking spaces, and then there would need to be parking for people coming.
That's correct. Exactly. We determined that by putting it on the peripheral of the campus, it would be easy ingress and egress for people from the community. It would not be on the central campus to cause any particular issues with traffic and congestion and what have you. And then there's plenty of space there for the modulars, restroom facilities, and additional parking for the public.
Yes, we would obviously have the dedicated parking for the clinic, and then we would lose an additional maybe 60 to 80 stalls for the construction.
Thank you. Ms. Waugh?
Okay. Oh, I've got another list. I've got a list, yes. Okay.
One beater all night.
A sufficient number. Okay. The $600,000 for the staff that's described in sort of general terms, and then those services, that seems like a low figure to me.
Just being approved to have a fundraiser.
For paying for the cost of staff and all the supplies to operate a clinic.
The $600,000 to provide the staffing, he indicated it's a low figure.
No, that's right in tune with what our staffing costs are, 500, 600,000 for one PAC team, or the primary care aligned team. So those are our costs.
Is this going to be similar in size to the facility in City of Commerce?
You know, I'm not familiar with the exact footprint, but I believe we may have two PAC teams there. I'm not quite sure. I'm shooting from the hip.
Okay. Okay, the location, the footprint. Now, it said in the PowerPoint here, or whatever software, 4,000 to 5,000 individual veterans. I don't know if that's veterans served or visits.
No, so that would, that's what we term as unique veterans, or unique social security numbers. But like I said, the clinic that we had in San Gabriel, it was originally about 900 veterans per year. So I think, like I said, we would easily do the 900, you know, in a short period of time, but the 4,000 to 5,000, that would take a while to build up the clinic to that number.
Okay, but that's unique veterans, so the number of visits would be something, some multiple of that, okay?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, okay. The organizations that were mentioned, and by the way, I belong to one of those veterans' organizations, but we've got the Army, Navy, and the Marines, he's next, okay, with his questions. That seems like an awful lot of fundraising. Have they, have those organizations raised that amount of money before?
You know, I can't.
Yes, we are actually being spearheaded by Congresswoman Judy Chu's office, and we've got our partners who are pretty certain that they can raise $250,000 fairly easily. I have a woman here who has 250 friends who are ready to give money right now.
$1,000 each.
Actually, I, sir, I can speak to that. For our Fisher House that was built on the West LA campus, the Palisades Post 283, the American Legion, they donated 2.1 million, which was the largest donation in American Legion history. So I think that there is a potential for veteran service organizations to fundraise the money.
Yeah. If we, I'm not a fan of creating plans on the basis of exceeding the greatest amount that's ever been raised before, or even matching it. So, okay, that's pretty much the question. Oh, and I'd make an observation, if we've got 900 veterans coming, we've got, or 900 visits or whatever, we've got 900 veterans, the PowerPoint and the memo that we received last meeting said something about perhaps 30% use the services, and a majority, I mean, we're just talking about a couple hundred of those 900 being PCC veterans. The, oh, also, the, what we were given here said that West Los Angeles is the closest Veterans Administration healthcare facility. There's a great, big, shiny facility down at Temple Street, two blocks away from Union Station. And they've got a, I went online and I looked at what they offer. It looks like what they offer is what we would offer here and more. So I don't understand why, except for pretty serious stuff, people would need to go to West Los Angeles.
So our West LA facility is our main tertiary care facility. That's where we have a lot of our specialty care. We also provide primary care. And you're correct, we have a downtown clinic. There's some specialty care there, but we do provide primary care. And I think the issue is, is that we want to be where the veterans are. And so we've identified this location as having a large potential to provide healthcare to veterans in the community in which they live. So I think that's why we're really seeking this partnership with PCC.
Yeah, my final observation here, and again, I'm a veteran and all that, and we've got a great Veteran Resource Center. But to me, what we have here is more of a sort of between an idea and a concept and not a plan yet. And I'm not comfortable saying, you know, we're going to go ahead and partner until we've got something more here in the way of hard and firm agreements and a plan rather than kind of the concepts.
I mean-
Having, you know, 4,000 to 5,000 patients as mentioned here, but it's going to be maybe 1,000 initially. So to me, it's moving around and not defined enough, but if we could do it, it would be fine.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Waugh.
Yeah, and perhaps you can clarify this, but, you know, I think what we're, once again, and I think maybe trustee Thompson touched on this, you know, what we're being asked for is to approve the concept. And one of the questions that came back to me from my Area 5 constituents was, why is not, why isn't PCC moving forward? And so my understanding was, until the VA can't commit to anything until the community or until the board has agreed that they could move forward and start to fundraise and that they are willing to put some commitment on the line that they're going to support this, and then the VA can come in as a partner. So I feel like, you know, if we keep waiting for every little dot to be dotted, or every little I to be dotted, and every T crossed, you know, we're not going to get, we're not going to move this forward. I agree that there are some things that we need, some nuts and bolts, I think, need to be better defined. And that's why, you know, I made the comment that we will bring back, or you will bring back a plan to us, but it allows at least the community to move forward and to fundraise for this, for this cause, which, when we went to Washington, I believe four of us were sitting there in Congresswoman Chu's office, and we talked about how important this was.
Okay, so- Student trustees, hands.
So a few things. One of the things I'm hearing is the chaos that you brought up, trustee Brown, and that's understandable. The thing is, the clinic you brought up is a three PAC team, or it was last year when I saw it, which means it's considerably larger, three times. A one PAC team is, think of your local doctor's office, one doctor, a nurse, that kind of thing. It's not a high-traffic, high-volume area. When you talk about the volume, it's spread out over the year, and you don't have the same types of issues that you would with a VA hospital where, you know, people come in and loiter or whatever, that kind of chaotic situation. This is just a standard, I make an appointment as a veteran, I come in, see my general care, I leave. And going back to why we don't go to Temple City, I can't go to Temple City because of my issues. Actually, to be completely blunt, I am a Level 2 PTSD, and I was blown up and ran over in Iraq. I have not seen the doctor for either of those issues in over a year. And the reason is, they schedule about three months in advance, is about as close as I can get, and I can't risk finals or other things. You know, there's too many moving parts in college. So I just put it off, which isn't a great thing, it's probably not a good thing for me to do. Aside from the waiting list, to get into specialty care, the other facilities are boosted by going to see your primary care. So if I could just go see a primary care that wasn't an hour drive and a two-hour wait, then I could get an appointment and go take care of issues. And also, the parking issue, I think you had mentioned before to me that that parking had been absorbed by the other structures, so that wouldn't be an issue either?
That's correct.
Okay. And I know you've heard about the VRC, and no one is against how great it is, but just to piggyback on what everyone else said, because of the VRC, I'm sitting in this chair and looking at going to VASR and things like that. So that's my two cents.
And what we mentioned about the parking is, we've taken these spaces offline while we were constructing the center for the performing arts, and it didn't have a negative impact on students finding other parking spaces.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of the concept of entering into this relationship with the veterans, for the veterans' village in the sense of going forward with the fundraising.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Mann and a second from Ms. Waugh for their discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, including the student trustee. Dr. Mann, I'm going to turn to you right now as head of our Policy Revisions Committee, and if you can go through the policies for this evening.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And I'd like to suggest, Mr. Martin came up with a really good idea. Last time we, I went through the policies, saw there's any questions, then we waited to vote to the end. I would like to do that. If someone wants to vote separately on any policy, we certainly can.
Good.
So the first one is, and most of these are very, very standard. The first one is 2210, which is the officers. And we do have a revision of that, which was in your packet, which simply adds a, that when necessary, the board president will may communicate, engage with district counsel, a legal counsel on behalf of the board and the district. Everything else in here is exactly from the existing policy. Any questions about 2210? Yes?
I apologize, trustee Mann. I did notice a necessary revision, which is the Assistant Secretary identifies the Vice President of Administrative Services. That is an outdated title. We don't longer have-
Okay, so it should be, it should be fixed. What?
Correct.
Yes, all right.
It should be fixed to the Senior Vice President of-
Okay. We will, okay, we will ask you and Ms. Colross to go through and update any titles that didn't get updated this time. Okay, all right. Any questions on that? All right. Then the next policy is Policy 2220, 2220, the Committee of the Boards. And if you notice, this is new language, but it's all in red ink, which means that it's legally required. And essentially, what it says is, the Board of Trustees may establish committees, and if the committees are less than three members and they do not have a regular meeting schedule, that they are not Brown Act committees. And it also says that these committees are advisory, they have no authority to act on behalf of the board, and that all their, any recommend, anything they can do, all they can really do is make recommendations to the board. Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I'd like to suggest some language changes here, because I read through this thing, it seemed to me to be confusing. In the second sentence, after the paragraph that begins with the Board of Trustees made by action, at the second sentence preceding at the very beginning of that, I'd like to suggest adding, "With the exception of advisory committees composed solely of less than a quorum of the board," a comma, "any committee established by board action," blah, et cetera.
Okay, could you give that to me again?
Sure. With the exception-
Where does it go?
It starts at the beginning of the second sentence of the paragraph that begins with the Board of Trustees made by action.
Okay, okay. With the exception of-
The exception of advisory committees composed solely- The exception of advisory committees composed solely of less than a quorum of the board, comma.
Okay.
"Any committee established by board action," et cetera.
Right, and then we take that next sentence out?
No.
No, just leave, okay, we're just adding-
I'd leave it there, I'd leave it there, yeah.
Okay, that's, okay. I have no problem with that, if no one, any, anything else, Mr. Thompson?
No, that, that's all.
Okay, then the next-
I have a question.
Yes, uh-huh.
So on the advisory committees, you know, I was looking online, is there any place where we list the advisory committees, or we say what they're for, or who the members are, and is that something, I know it's probably procedural, but I just wanted to bring that up.
I don't think there is, but there's no reason why we, why we couldn't.
I don't think you want to put that in your policy.
But you don't want that in the policy.
I don't think it needs to be in policy, but I would like to see someplace where we know what advisory committees have been appointed, who's been-
Oh, yeah, sure.
-appointed to them and listed somewhere. And I think the public should know that, too.
Yeah, but with a policy, we want the flexibility of-
Yeah, right. Okay, the next one, then, any other questions on this one? The next one is Board Policy 2330, and this is on quorum and meeting. And again, this is language that is required, and it comes right out of our existing policy. The only difference is in number five, where it says, "The board will publicly report any action taken in open session and the voter abstention of each individual board member present." We do this, but this just adds it to our policy. It's in red ink, it is legally required. Any questions on that? All right, then the next one is Board Policy 2360, which is on the minutes. And again, what has been added is that the superintendent president will cause the minutes to be taken, they're a public record, and they are available, must be made available to the public, and in appropriate alternative formats, is to be accessible with a person with disabilities. And I think that is legally required. That is the only change. Any questions on that? All right. The next one is the Board Policy on Recording. This is a new policy, and I think we haven't had it before, because we have only, we didn't used to record our meetings. All the language here is in red ink, which is legally required, and I think it simply gives the public access to the recordings that the board has, has made. Any questions on that? Yes, Mr. Selfage?
I thought that, well, I've gone online, and there are videotapes of almost all our meetings, going back for quite a ways, which I think is a very good, good idea.
Yeah, but we, but we haven't updated our, these policies have not been updated in four or five years. So we've only been recording, I think, the last three years.
Okay.
Okay. Right, so that was what I meant when I said-
Oh, okay, it's the policy that's new, not the recording?
No, the policy is new, because we started recording without a policy, which said we would make it public. I think we did, but we needed a policy, that's all. Any other, any questions on that? The next one is on the political activity. This is a new policy, coming from the Policy and Procedures Service. I think we rather understood it, but it makes it very clear that the members of the Board of Trustees should not use district funds, services, or supplies, or equipment to use the passage or defeat of any ballot major candidate, including themselves, and that the board may take positions on referendum or initiative ballots that have, are in legitimate interest to the district, and we can give out information if we, on bond or other ballot measures, but not take policies or advocate. And this is also legally required. Any questions on that?
I think you lose your seat if you do that.
Pardon me?
I think you lose your seat.
I think you would get in really big trouble. And then the last one is Board Policy 4700. This is not legally required. I just want to give you a little bit of background on this. Back, I think it was around 2000, when the board entered into this negotiation with Southern California Public Radio to manage our radio station and to rent the time, we decided before we went out for bid on this, that we needed a clear statement of the policy of the purpose of the radio station. And if you notice, it says it is to provide laboratory for our students and to have high-quality cultural education and public affairs programming. We felt that it was important to say that the radio station was part of our educational mission, and also that it would operate as physically self-supporting part of the college. We thought that was important, because it had not been. Yes, Mr. Thompson?
Again, I would suggest some language changes in the first paragraph of this. KPCC-FM, comma, a full-time public radio station owned, I would delete "and operated", owned by the district-
Right.
-and operated by Southern California Public Radio under a federal communications commission license, et cetera. I, I think, if I may, General Counsel Cooper, I'm a little concerned, the term owned and operated is a, is an FCC-
Requirement.
-term of art, and, and I'm concerned that if we change this without really making certain that it's, it's an acceptable change, we may have a problem with our license.
That's correct. We, we are the licensee, so, because we own and operate the stations, so that the terminology is very specific.
Yeah.
We don't operate it.
Well, we don't, well, we operate it through a contractor, basically, but we can say, we don't have to say operated, we can say owned, but we are still the licensee of the license.
But that's what I'm saying.
Why don't we just take out operated, then?
Delete "and operated."
Right, and just say owned by-
By the district, and I would say "and operated by Southern California Public Radio" under a federal communications commission license issued to the Board of Trustees. What's wrong with that?
I think what's wrong with it, just what he said, it puts our license at risk.
I think if it's, with due respect to Trustee Thompson, I would ask our General Counsel, Cooper, to investigate that with, with our, John Krieger, our Communications Counsel.
She's our FCC counsel in Washington.
Our FCC counsel, make sure that we are compliant. But if we are, then it's fine, but I just want to make sure.
Let's pull this one, then, and get, and let our counsel check it out, and then we'll check it.
That's fine, but what struck me was, we actually do not operate that. We may do it technically through, but it's done by Southern California Public Radio, so. Trustee Thompson, you are absolutely correct. I just want to make sure the language is correct.
I had the same impression when I read it.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct, we just want to protect the license.
Okay, so can we just, can we pull this one and have that checked, and see if we can get the exact language?
Yes.
Or maybe it could be operated through a lease agreement? I mean, what we've done is we've, was, if we've leased it.
I'll ask Counsel Cooper and our outside Counsel Krieger to recommend some language, if you would, please.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mann. Do you want to put forward a motion?
I would like to move approval of the policies except for BP 4700, which we will pull for further-
With the amendments.
As amended.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann and a second from Ms. Waugh. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, it is unanimous vote, including the student trustee. We will now move on to information items tonight, and the first is the Fall 2014 Enrollment Report. Mr. Miller?
Yes, we are pleased to present this report. We will keep it brief, but to the point, we have a presentation by Dr. Kathy Scott, who I introduced earlier as our new Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs, supported by her team to help with this. We are passing out an updated PowerPoint, because the news continues to get better, and we wanted to share the most accurate information with you. So, Dr. Scott.
Colleagues and ladies and gentlemen, firstly, I'd like to say it's my pleasure and honor to be with PCC in the academic affairs area, and I appreciate this opportunity to provide you with an enrollment management report. I would like to start briefly with the context of enrollment management in light of the budget situation in California over the last few years, looking also at PCC, how it has been affected and responded. Between 2007, '08, and 2011, '12, California Community College funding was cut approximately $1.5 billion. Course offerings statewide were cut 25% during, I just lost my PowerPoint.
Go ahead, talk, and we can listen.
Okay. All right, during this state, during this time, courses were cut about 25%, with base allocations to the colleges being lowered also. These budget cuts forced the community college, colleges to ration course offerings, to, in essence, ration access, which as a result, shut out nearly half a million students from the system statewide. As a result of the cuts and the associated workload reductions, head counts, which refers to the number of students, declined significantly across the state, and PCC's situation was reflective of the statewide declines. During these years, fall 2009 to fall 2012, PCC lost 4,131 students. As you know, in November 2012, the voters passed Prop 30, which prevented additional cuts to education and began the restoration. PCC was provided the opportunity to restore 247 FTEs on the credit side. Our base for that year was 19,454. Our adjusted target was 19,701, and we exceeded the target with a total FTEs of 19,781. In 2013, 14, we were provided with another opportunity for partial restoration, 18% of the 11, 12 reduction, or an additional 290 FTEs. For that year, our credit base was 19,709, and our new target was 19,999. We again exceeded the target with a total FTEs of just over 20,000. Which brings us to the current year. For credit and non-credit, our base is 21,341. This year, we are being asked to make up a significant amount of FTEs or access growth, 800 FTEs. In consultation with the State Chancellor's Office, Dr. Miller learned also that we have a potential growth opportunity for an additional 440 FTEs, because some colleges may not be in a position to grow, and the state overall needs to grow. And this also gives us another opportunity to raise our base. Our new, our new 2014, '15 target is 22,581, which is a significant jump in FTEs. But it is an opportunity that we want to take full advantage of, because as we grow, our base from which future funding occurs grows as well, and that's why it's so important that we reach this target. If we look at the FTS by term, starting on the credit side, our targets are as follows. For the Summer B Session, and this is called Leading Summer, which reflects the portion of summer in which classes started after July 1st of this, of last year, I'm sorry, this year, our current summer offerings, the, it will be 1,257. Our target for Fall, 9,398. For Spring, 9,126. And for Summer A, the portion of summer prior to the next fiscal year, we will be at 1,500, for the total of 21,281. On the non-credit side, our targets have similarly increased. Summer B, which is the leading numbers, 91. For Fall, we're projecting 575. For Spring, our target is 500. And Summer A, the trailing summer, 135, for a total of 1,300. On the credit side, Dr. Ariano's leadership will allow us to aggressively pursue these targets. She has developed strategies to achieve the targets, which include shifting from ESL Managed Enrollment to Open Entry/Open Exit, from AB 86 Initiative, adding ESL sections at PUSD-selected sites, implementation of the new Adult High School Diploma Program.
And if I'm gonna, if I may, I'll just interrupt for a second. One of the important things about the opportunity with non-credit is there is action pending, legislation pending and action pending to increase the FTS payment from, for something called CDCP, which is Career Development and Career Preparation Funding, from roughly $3,200 per FTS to $4,600, which is what we get for the credit side. So there's a dramatic opportunity to increase the revenue effective the '15, '16 fiscal year.
Thank you, that's correct. For, let's see, I'm sorry. For non-credit and especially credit, part of our enrollment strategy also involves schedule-building parameters, the factors and considerations that drive our decisions. We need to remain completion-focused. We need to be guided by our Educational Master Plan and its achievement areas, including transfer degrees and certificate completion, and state-defined outcomes in the same areas, and also including areas such as basic skills, which were part of the Student Success Act. We need to meet the high demand for GE courses, and finally, we need to make effective use of our resources, both physical and financial, in our enrollment management strategies. For Fall, our strategies reflect the factors about which I just spoke. We have added 136 credit sections, including courses on the 25 highest-demand list, courses with the highest waitlist, and those courses at the bottom there are the 25 high-demand courses, courses on, with the highest waitlists, DE, where, distance ed, where demand continues to grow, courses identified as needed by Student Affairs, additional sections of College I for First Year Pathways, which has continued to expand each year due to its great success, and a program that I well know many colleges try to emulate. Those strategies have yielded results. Our head count on the first day of Fall 2013, last year, was 24,577. Our enrollment currently, with more than two weeks remaining for students to enroll, is 24,304. So we're essentially at the same place with two weeks left for students to enroll. With, with enrollment management, we are making strategic decisions about what to cancel and what to add, being mindful of our schedule-building parameters. Our decisions are data-informed, looking at high-enrolled classes, which means those that have no seats and full waitlists, low-enrolled classes, those that are less than 40% filled, the classes with the greatest number of waitlisted students, and scheduling information such as room and time availability. Our strategies include moving faculty from low-enrolled sections to new high-demand sections, hiring faculty members in areas where they are most needed, scheduling large group instruction, where it is pedagogically sound to do so. While we are addressing many of our enrollment management needs, there are, there are opportunities for improvement. We need to grow with limited space, making the need for strategic decisions even more important. We need to be able to hire in impacted areas, such as some of the sciences, including chemistry. We need to work with and motivate students to enroll in sections that are open. We need to engage more faculty to teach online, as this is an area for significant growth, both from a student demand perspective and an enrollment, enrollment management perspective. Strategies for progress in this area include educating the campus about FTEs, including the opportunities for restoration growth and FTEs's connection to the budget, consulting with associated students, the Academic Senate, the Classified Senate on Enrollment Management, collaborating with Student Affairs, maintaining a high level of instructional quality while facilitating strategies to reach the restoration growth targets, ensuring that we continue to focus on student success and retention as well, enhancing our use of data, refining our FTEs projections, linking school FTEs targets with instructional budgets, aligning NCNs with rooms, reviewing waitlist strategies, and setting efficiency targets to make sure that we are using the, making the best use of our resources, again, both physical and financial. Okay, that concludes my presentation, but I would like to add, in the short time I've been here, the deans and I have worked very hard on trying to implement these strategies, and we will continue to do so in the two weeks leading up to the beginning of the semester. We are committed to providing the best schedule we can for our students, taking into account our enrollment management strategies. And in the following days, I look forward to meeting the faculty, to working with them on areas involving academic affairs, including enrollment management. Thank you.
I just want to say, being a professor, I think these are, your strategies are very honorable and right on, especially trying to teach faculty about FTE, which I've tried for years, and I've about given up. But faculty have to realize that they're, we hire within budgets, there's a certain amount of money for faculty, and, and you can't go beyond that, and if you don't have the money, you have to increase to large class sizes, and it's the first time I've ever seen anybody put that down in the strategies, and I think it's very good. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I have a couple of questions. So I noticed both on your, that you surveyed for the highest-demand classes, I guess, and then I was reading Dr. Bell's report. At an earlier meeting that we had with trustees Martin and Brown and myself, we talked about surveying our communities to see what the needs, not just who is enrolled, but I didn't see that, and I was wondering if there was going to be an outreach for that.
You know, I haven't been here very long, so I'd like to defer to my colleagues.
Well, let me just put it out, I guess because when we talked about it, I had heard that we would be surveying our communities to find out what the needs were for noncredit as well as credit classes.
I think Matt can speak to that, and I can briefly speak to that as well.
Certainly. I know that Dr. Ariano and Dr. Bell have worked with Crystal in developing a survey for noncredit, and I believe the survey is complete, and they're discussing now what are the best venues to administer the survey.
Yes, and to be a little more specific in relation to Rosemead, we did implement a pretty specific survey for the students at Rosemead. We have a survey designed for the community. Dr. Bell is working with the Rosemead Chamber and other entities, the Rosemead City Hall, to develop some strategies to get that out into the Rosemead Temple City community and other areas out there. Ms. Carras, I think that's about it, is that correct? So we're working on that, is what it means.
Thank you. So I have two other questions. You talk about moving faculty from high to low-demand, or from low to high-demand classes, I guess.
Correct.
So is there a tenure issue in that?
No.
No?
Well, full-time faculty have to have their load, and so they would be moved regardless. But there are lots of opportunities for new, for high-demand sections, because there's so many, all over the GE area, and sometimes it's a matter of timing. Some things will fill up quicker than others, but if something's particularly low, you know, say, I don't know, just in English, if there were maybe three or four students in the class, and the English 1As were all full, then it would make sense to move that faculty member to a high-demand section, and for part-time faculty, it keeps the faculty member in that position.
And my last question is, I didn't see any strategy for link learning and outcomes, and I know that's high on our student success initiatives also, but, and I think that, you know, as we go out into the communities, I think that would be something that would be important.
I agree. There are other things in our enrollment strategy that I will be looking at in the coming weeks and months, learning communities, link learning, and I just, I need to become more familiar with PCC and the programs, but I will be doing that. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Savage?
Right. You may be the only person in this room that's been here at PCC less time than I have, although I was a student here a long, long time ago. Under the strategies, you had, let's see, what did you call it? Review waitlist strategy. I've been sort of confused by what I understand to be the schedule that we operate by here at PCC, by which the last day to add a class comes before the last day to drop a class without penalty or nasty marks on your transcript. Seems to me that's backward, and that if we had, if the last day to drop a class without having a W or whatever on your transcript, if that came before the last day to add a class, wouldn't we be able to have more people who are on waitlists getting into classes where a vacancy had occurred? I just thought, so, and again, you're new, so I have you at a disadvantage.
Moving up that W is difficult, because students are used to having a certain amount of time to be in a class to see if that's going to work before they withdraw.
But allowing somebody to add, but cutting off their ability to add a class, even if there's a vacancy.
Well, we have census data that drives it, and then also there are pedagogical reasons. If someone misses three weeks, the first three weeks of class, it's very difficult to come in and make it up. I know the research shows that students who add late tend to do poorly overall.
Okay. And the other thing, one of the slides that was changed, Fall 13 to Fall 14, credit head count, the old version, and I guess I just understood it now, that the 24th day before the first day of class, there were 15,000 people signed up. That was a year ago, or that was for Fall 13. For Fall 14, I guess here we are, 24 days ahead, and there was this, you know, 8,000 more students who were adding. Is there something that explains why, looking at these figures here, apparently, students are really getting more serious about getting their classes signed up, or is there some other interpretation?
Well, we've added 136 sections, and we're trying to ensure, we're closing low-enrolled sections and opening up sections that are in demand.
The other thing that we did, and Dr. Lee will check me on this, but we accelerated the period in time in which we opened up registration slots.
Correct.
So we provided, I think we're ahead of ourselves by at least 10 or 14 days.
Right.
And so therefore, more people were able to get into the system, if you will.
Right. And we changed the slide to make it more applicable.
Yeah, last year was our first primary term in the Lancer Point system, and so we administered the priority dates at a slower pace, and therefore, not a lot of students were registered by this time.
Mr. Carras, I usually don't call on people, but you have a short comment?
Would you come to the microphone for our viewers, please? Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Scott. I'm Eduardo Cairo, President of Academic Senate.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. My question is, in regards, well, from the Academic Senate point of view, I see a lot of problems here, but I'll just address one since I have limited time. In aligning the NCNs with rooms, do you plan to use the shared governance NCNs or the ones imposed by the college that were not shared governance?
How's that for a loaded question for two weeks on the job, Dr. Scott?
This is my 13th day, so I have to look into the NCN issue. I understand that it's controversial, but I need some time to review it before I could answer that kind of a question. But my intention is to work with the Senate and to speak with Senate people, and to, we have the cancellation procedures that were given to you, and we're working on those.
Right, but the cancellation procedures did not go through Academic Senate, so that's a different issue. So I just want to make sure that, see if you are going to be willing to abide by the shared governance NCNs.
It'd be nice to her, Eduardo, okay?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
We'll have a pleasant discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, and welcome to the job, PCC. Well, we all love one another. Okay, information item today is number I, costs associated with the number of administrators at PCC. Mr. Miller?
Yes, this is an item that one of our faculty members, Assistant Professor Melissa Michelson, requested some time on the board agenda. The board president, yourself, was kind enough to provide Ms. Michelson some time to express what she wishes to express. I don't know what her time limit is, if you want to discuss it or not. Usually it's three to five minutes, so it's your call.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Well, I put in a, may I close this laptop? Or do you need it for later?
No, I think we're done with it, thank you.
Okay. So is this my public comment?
Basically, yes.
Okay, because then I have a public comment, which is my yellow card, and then I have the agenda item, correct?
Oh, in terms of the amount of time. Yes, I guess the answer is yes.
I'm assuming nobody, I don't know if anybody else has a public comment about this topic. So then I'll start my public comment, then?
Guess so. Well, I don't know, what are you doing? You're doing a presentation, why do you need a public comment?
How can you comment on your own presentation?
There is a comment that doesn't really fit in the presentation.
Go ahead, and I'll see how far we go.
So this is the public comment.
Yeah.
So I'm a little concerned at how hard it's been to get basic data from PCC. Tonight, I'll give you a few examples. I tried to get some information from PCC for my research presentation on realignment over the last four weeks, which I'm going to give you. First, I asked Crystal Colross for some information. She referred me to the Senate President for one request, and then gave me the other request. In HR, Ms. Hampton referred me to the Faculty Association, so then I asked the Faculty Association, who referred me back to administration, because they hadn't gotten that information either from administration. And then I asked the Transfer Center for some information for my research, but they referred me to Crystal Colross. I asked Bob Miller with one email plus one follow-up email, but the request may not be readily feasible. I basically wanted to find out about the dissemination and patterns of recipients of stipends over the past year. Ms. Hampton finally did eventually give me something, by the way, after my follow-up email to her. She said HR doesn't have the information I requested, but didn't direct me to the department that would. She said I instead should put in a public records request. My simple request was the number of full-time and part-time faculty at PCC in the academic years between 2010 and 2014. What I got instead was numbers of full-time faculty only for 2014, nothing from the consecutive years of 2010 to 2014. And kindly, she attached something from the chancellor's office, which unfortunately, I didn't trust, because it said we only had 260 temporary faculty. So I've wondered if the administration just doesn't want to share or doesn't have the data, and it's rather shocking to me that the school doesn't know how many people work at PCC. Then how does the district report numbers of full-time and part-time faculty to the chancellor? Perhaps that's why in my research that I've encountered discrepancies between the staffing reports of chancellor's office data, PCC's own budget summaries on personnel, and what the publicity office puts out on PCC's fact sheet every year. I'm not alone in encountering such problems and getting information. I've met a student who has a similar problem of runaround from IPRO when doing a project for his class. Professor Abby Delman shared, thank you, with the Academic Senate last semester, her horrific experience of runaround and potential hostile work environment, in my opinion, when she made her own data request. So perhaps she'll report her experience to you in the future. Most faculty eventually give up. I wonder if that's the deliberate intent. It's just unfortunate that we, including the Senate Faculty Association, haven't been getting supported by administrators in this way. Putting public records requests is one solution, but even that's not a guarantee. I know public records requests have been submitted to PCC that have been stalled to the point of violating the timeframe stipulated in the government code. There's just no accountability, and I hope that there will be more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Do I have an agenda item to actually report on?
I really don't know what you're doing. Usually, this is taken up, we usually listen to the, you go to the Academic Senate, and they come forward and ask for this, so what do you? I don't understand what you're asking about specifically.
I've prepared, based on the agenda item, letter I, and if the board is not ready to listen to it, I can certainly reschedule it for another time, but the agenda item was, I requested as per board policy, that a member of the public could request that something be accepted for your agenda. And after, I don't want to take up the time with this long story, so I just want to know if you're going to accept and, you know, follow through with my agenda item, letter I. I don't know what's normally done here, I think this is unusual.
Usually, normally, it's the Academic Senate will come forward, you go to them first, and they will come forward and ask for that type of information. You gather it yourself through public record acts, or going through the agenda.
This is an agenda item.
President Fellow, Dr. Michelson did make a request to have an item put on the agenda as a member of the public, which she was entitled to do. The determination was made pursuant to the bylaw that it did relate to district business, and that it would be placed on the agenda within the next three meetings, which it has been. This is the time. So the matter is on your agenda. Dr. Michelson is free to make a presentation, that is why it's on the agenda.
Make a presentation, but specifically, I don't understand. Just ask specifically the information you want, and we'll try to get it to you. How's that?
No, I'd like to make a presentation.
I don't want to hear any more stories.
No, I'd like to make a presentation.
Go ahead.
Okay. So this is, the topic obviously is costs associated with realignment. As you've heard, three months ago, I asked the board for specific information regarding the impact of this reorganization plan, the realignment, and last month, I find out that I've been, that I am here to give a presentation on it. I'm equally shocked and surprised, as you are, Dr. Fellow. I appreciate the opportunity, but as a caveat, I'm simply an interested faculty member and faculty senator, concerned taxpayer and voter, and as mentioned in my public comment, some information was problematic to get, but I will press forward. I have five parts to this. It should take no more than 10 minutes. My purpose today is, the purpose of my research project for the Board of Trustees is to find out if there's a correlation of reorganization of the school and student success, see how much it's costing taxpayers, and what are the effects. The majority of my data comes from the chancellor's office, and I'll be happy to provide you with the extensive spreadsheet that I've created. Please forgive me, I've been out of town, and I just got in today, so I don't have a handout or PowerPoint at the moment. So in terms of a little bit of history and background, I know the mantra here at PCC is moving forward, but I believe it's important to know where we've been, so we don't repeat the past. As a quick overview, in 2011, for some of you who weren't here, we had 29 administrators, and by administrators, I'm referring to vice presidents, managers, and supervisors. Compared to 2014-15, we have a planned 97 administration. That's triple. Two years ago, the president felt it was time to reorganize a school, because there were too many silos on campus. Students, staff, and faculty worked in task teams the entire year to realign the school. They came up with a plan, which is this one, and then that was eventually approved by the Senate and then ignored by the administration. Since then, in its place, two more plans have appeared. Many administrators on the second org chart, and obviously, you know what it is, but this one, many of these administrators on this chart have already either been fired, left, or have been shuffled to other positions. Now, there's the third org chart, which has nearly 100 positions for managers or supervisors. This one has not been shared with the campus at large in any phase of its planning, only the administration saw it and worked on it. It was projected on the wall at the College Council in December 2013, right here in this room, and no hard copies have ever been passed out, even when faculty requested it after that. No campus-wide survey was administered as to its necessity, no research or data-driven rationale for it. The only input requested from administration was from an improvised survey passed out to about 25 spectators at the College Council meeting, which is this one, that Crystal Colross passed out, which has some really good questions. Unfortunately, not enough people filled it out, and certainly, the results have not been published. Again, not a single vote or consensus, neither from faculty, staff, or even, needless to say, this Board of Trustees, has occurred on the reorganization. Despite reasonable requests made at subsequent board meetings for postponement of the latest reorg, it's been pushed through, and extensive hiring and recruitment has taken place. According to HR Director, 76 managerial recruitment positions have taken place last year. The size of the administration will triple from what it was three years ago. In the meantime, PCC will have lost more than one-third of its full-time faculty and counselors since 2009. Finally, the only rationale that has been put forth for the reorganization but never backed up with data, and is a quote from President Rocha, "to enhance accountability and services to the faculty, which will free up money for professional development." So how much money exactly is freed up? Why for professional development? In terms of administrative accountability, was the administration never held accountable before this? Layers of managers don't necessarily translate to accountability. In Part II, I'd like to talk about the costs, some costs in employment rates and success rates from 2011 to 2014. There's been a steady progression of administrative hirings. Many faculty feel it's too fast. We've started with 29 administrators around 2011, 2012. We've started with 29 administrators around 2011, 2012, according to the Chancellor's Office. That went up to 68, according to administrations' reports. And then in 2014-15, we're expecting 77, which is a 50% increase, and moving towards the 98 administrators in the February 2014 org chart. So that's a 61% increase from 2011, 2011, 2012. Just to compare, to put things in perspective, current counselor-to-student ratio is 885 to one student. That's almost 900 to one. For fall 20, between the six years, from fall 2007 to 2013, just to go back a little further, full-time tenured faculty, and I mean instructors, counselors, librarians and non-teaching other faculty, have decreased by over a third. In terms of salaries and budget and employees, between 2011 and 2013, and 2013-2014, the budget line items for managers went up by 2.82% and down for faculty by 1.51%. In 2012, there were 337 teachers, counselors, librarians and other full-time faculty, but there was no change in 2013. But for managers and supervisors, there was a 65% increase. In 2011, salaries budgeted for all managers totaled 6 million approximately, which is a 46% increase three years later, when in 2014, the amount jumped to 8.8 million for a difference of 2.7 million. I was unable to get the same faculty salaries information for those same years, but I could get for 2010, full-time faculty salaries amounted to 27.7 million, but that went down by 2.5 million to 25.2 million two years later in 2012. So it seems like the 2.5 million that's being saved in faculty salaries went towards the 2.7 million differential in manager salaries, or maybe it went somewhere else. By the way, in terms of FTEs you mentioned today, they have not necessarily improved with reorganizations. In fact, ours have been of the lowest in, of the six local comparable colleges. We compare locally, the similar, when I do the comparison, we look at local ones that have the same sizes. There's no point in going to compare something up in Redwood, you know, the Redwood Forest. So in 2009, we had over 19,000 FTEs, but in 2012, we dropped to 1,400, 1,400, 500 FTEs. Other colleges have also dropped FTEs, but we have dropped by the largest margin. Part three, negative effects. The reorganization has contributed greatly to the mistrust and negative campus climate. As I mentioned, we had the one year of faculty, staff and administrators working together on the original task teams, but their hard work was ignored. That doesn't bode well for campus climate. On the second and third reorg, there just wasn't campus-wide consultation. So why don't we move forward from here and begin to work together with an extensive collaborative analysis and survey as to the full necessity of this reorg? Another negative effect has been the harried pace of hiring to fill the administrator positions, and that's being, that's a detriment to our students and the quality of the applicants. To look at, to interview and to look at all the applications takes at least 15 to 20 hours, maybe more, of faculty members' time, staff members and administrators' time as well. This is taking away from other duties, curriculum development, SLO assessment, redesigning teaching methods, et cetera, professional development duties. It's just happening very fast, very quickly and all at once. The Senate has a resolution that they voted on in spring last semester against the realignment, which I believe is forthcoming to you guys. Finally, another negative effect has been from a faculty perspective, we're still in silos. It's not any easier to get information or support. One example has been where I have attempted to get information from HR, but I'm redirected to Bob Bell for my HR issues. And in English ESL, we used to be part of English, but we separated to have more leadership and lessen the load and the, from, of the dean, but now we're back with English. Dean Olmar has more under her now than before. She's doing a great job under the circumstances, by the way, but those are just some personal examples. My conclusions, there's nothing in the education master plan relate, that relates to realignment. Nothing in board goals relates to realignment. FTEs fluctuate with or without reorganization. Numbers of sections fluctuate, transfers fluctuate. In other words, realignment isn't a necessity to success at the college. The number of sites, locations also seems irrelevant. Class cancellations last year at Rosemead may indicate that it might not be as successful as it could be. But again, the number of sites doesn't really matter if overall enrollments doesn't align. Various sources, including from the president, have revealed that our success rates at the school are down. I'm not saying it's because of increased administration, but the doubling of the administration seems to be irrelevant and, or tripling of the administration just seems to be irrelevant and has caused other problems and may be a misuse of taxpayer money. There are other issues that we need to look at as a result of this reorganization. Even with the reorg, school is, the campus believes that the school is still disorganized, not running smoothly and has a lack of communication, according to the various campus climate surveys. The school just doesn't believe that we've been running smoothly. So my suggestions to the board, if you would allow me to make these suggestions, is if the board is really interested in student success, we should hire more full-time faculty and counselors. Faculty and counselors have office hours to give our students one-on-one treatment, the one-on-one treatment that they deserve. Unfortunately, increasing part-time faculty, as PCC has been doing rampantly, by some accounts, 900-plus part-time compared to 360 full-time. That doesn't help the school as a whole progress in terms of SLOs and curriculum advancement and other shared governance duties. They may be, the part-time faculty may be very good in the classroom, but the other things that we do as faculty are not readily available. No amount of administrators will be able to take on that charge as what we all do as full-time faculty. Another suggestion I'd like to make, and then I'll be finished, is to slow down the administrative hiring immediately until a thorough analysis can be gotten. Let's take a careful look at what's taken place so far and then ask the administration to do a few things. One would be to quantify the effects with a comprehensive cross-campus qualitative survey, like the one that Crystal Colros passed out to the 20 or so people in the audience at the College Council. We could ask the administration to weigh the benefits and drawbacks of the realignment, but get feedback from all constituents in doing so, and then compare salaries, monies actually saved as promised, and accountability actually held, and let that drive your decisions. The administration has been hiring and changing the fabric of the college, but there's been no data-driven rationale given to support these decisions. If the board and administration is interested in collegiality and communication, we need campus-wide input, and we should start this reconstruction process together as a campus community right now. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be any changes, just careful, slower and cost-effective changes that the board should be more involved in and hold the administration responsible for those changes, engage the whole campus in changes that are affecting faculty, staff and students. And I think this will also bode well for the taxpayers and voters. Thank you for allowing me to present this preliminary information tonight to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I kind of agree, I have to say, I kind of agree with you. I have the same complaints at the university where we've doubled deans and vice presidents in the past few years, and I have the same complaints with Washington DC, which just proliferates positions. Dr. Mann.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. You made some very interesting points, but I'm not an oral learner, so to hear it like that, it's-
I understand.
-just went through my head.
I understand.
So in the future, it would be really helpful to have something in writing, because I don't get it other. The other point I would like to make, though, is I have had some conversations with faculty about this request for data. Some of the information which they have requested are very, are readily available, for example, in the board reports. If you want to know who's hired, all you got to do is you just go through. And I don't know why, I mean, I was a faculty member for years. It never occurred to me if I wanted to know something to go to Human Resources or to my dean. I would go to the state and local documents, which were readily available, where I could do the research and dig it out. So you did say you use the Chancellor's Office data, which I think is really very nice, but I, I think that it's, if people are faculty members, they should be able to conduct some basic, some basic research, and particularly on the number of hires. It's very simple to find out how many people are hired in a year.
I agree.
It takes about a half an hour, and you can do that yourself. And so I really applaud your efforts and what you're doing, but I, the stories about how you ask different people for data, I find a little bit difficult to accept because I didn't hear. First thing I did was I went to this source, this source, this source, and when I couldn't find that information, then I asked, which is what I would hope that faculty would do.
Well, as I had said, the Chancellor's Office data has been inconsistent with, I mean, the basic number of full-time faculty and part-time faculty should be able to be gotten from the Chancellor's Office. But when I looked at the Chancellor's Office, it said that in 2012, we had 260 temporary faculty, and I thought that's impossible that we had that.
Well, but you know, excuse me, but, but what I would do if I were you is I would take a source and I would use it. The advantage of the Chancellor's Office data is you compare it to other campuses, and I, you know, that's just, that's just, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I get frustrated hearing about how faculty cannot get data before trying, you know, doing the research themselves.
But we do. We all do try to reach out to the other-
Well, that's not what I've been told.
And speaking of data, what I'd like to do is turn to Dr. Miller to see if he can answer some of your, and provide some of the data that you asked for this evening.
Yeah, so first of all, Ms. Michelson, I appreciate your, you're doing this. It takes a lot of bravery to do what you're doing, and, and it takes-
Thank you.
-a lot of professionalism to stand up for what you believe is correct. So respectfully, I just want to respond to a few of these items. You mentioned that we have 97 managers. That's, that's not correct. Dr. Douglas, I think the number's more like 70, 67. Is that, is that the number right now? 67. So, so I just want to set the record straight on that. You indicated that the district has been spending more on administrators and less on faculty. In 2013-14, the district, in fact, spent an additional $4.5 million on faculty overload and adjuncts to add the number of sections that we added. We added roughly about 900 additional sections. That generated roughly a little over $13 million in additional FTEs as we continue to grow and stabilize our base. I do want to say that you're, you took on a challenging time to look at this data because the state has come out of this economic downturn, so the years 2007, '08 through, say, '12, '13 were really down years for everybody. So I can understand how confusing it would be to go to the Chancellor's site and try to pull data, and as Ms. Colros and others would tell you, the Chancellor's site is usually a year or two behind in some form or fashion, depending on what you're looking at. So it's very, it's very difficult. So generally speaking, the administration tries to and will try more in the future to work very closely with the Academic Senate and the Faculty Association to respond to their data requests and needs. Hopefully, and most of the time, we respect the fact that those are the two representative groups of the faculty, and we hope that their requests are towards the common goal of doing what's best for students. So those take number one priority, and, and the bottom line is our staff can only do so much in a given period of time. I say all that respectfully, though, because I do understand what you're attempting to do and respect your right to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll wrap up this discussion and turn to superintendent's report.
Briefly, may I also offer that I'm very sorry for not giving a handout, but as I said, I've been out of town, so I'd be happy to send this to you, so you may be, you may read it at your leisure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No superintendent's report, other than the written reports that were provided tonight, and also the standard report that Dr. Bell and I give on our two respective areas.
Thank you very much. Now, now we'll have shared governance, give any updates on coming events. Mr. Rosco, Associated Students.
So I'll try to be as quick as possible, because I'm really tired. It's been a long day. So we just got back from our retreat. We had a really successful, wonderful leadership retreat. Some of the things that came out of that were some common board goals. Right now, the board's getting ready for Welcome Day, which is going to be August 22nd, as you guys already know. I invite you guys to come out and celebrate with us. We will be holding three separate breakout sessions, all about the same thing, which will be in R122, and we will also be having a table in here just to welcome new students that are coming in. Second thing we're also getting ready for is Week of Welcome, which is hosted by us usually and some of the other places on campus as well. Club Week this week will be the third week of school, so not the week of the 25th, or the first week of September, but the second week of September. So please make sure you come out, show support, and we're also getting together what we're going to do throughout the year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Altamirano.
Got a question. I've been getting emails about events and stuff. Are we all going to get individual invitations for each of these things so that we can try and work them into our schedule?
They usually do. Send them out. Jordan will do that. Mr. Altamirano.
Okay, I'm Jeannie Sullivan. We have been doing a lot in Classified Senate recently. We have two new senators, Mei Ling Chang and Graciela Cangella, and Jeff Wojcik was re-elected just recently. Today, we had our elections for officers. Jeff Wojcik will be our president. Deborah Caturero is our vice president. Yajira De La Paz is our treasurer, and I'm going to be the secretary for Senate. Anna Davis will be our parliamentarian, and Graciela will our BOT rep. So Graciela will be coming here, making reports. Wanted to let you know that on August 12th, Tuesday, August 12th, we're going to have the Welcome Classified Luncheon, which is for all classified staff. It's going to be held during the lunch hours of 11:30 to 1:30, and this is going to be an opportunity to let all classified staff meet the new classified Senator officers as well, and this is sponsored by APL, which is the Academy of Professional Learning. They're very interested in developing, the professional development of classified staff managers and faculty, and so we're very thankful to align with them for this development. And they will be presenting additional opportunities and soliciting opinions of the staff to what they could do for professional development. And lastly, I would just wanted to extend a very warm invitation to any Board of Trustee member who would like to attend a Classified Senate meeting. We hold them on the first and third Wednesdays of every month. It usually aligns with the Board of Trustees meeting. We meet at 10 o'clock in C217. So our very next meeting will be on August the 20th, and any, we welcome you anytime to join us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cairo, Academic Senate.
Let me first preface my statement by saying that the following statements are being, are being made with the utmost respect to the board. But let me first say that I find it appalling that the Board of Trustees has not come up with a public statement regarding the current position of Dr. Rocha. Whether he's gone, whether you're in current discussions, faculty, staff, students, community members, everyone deserves to know. Is he staying? Is he going? Are you in discussions? There is no shame. There is no legal matter that says you can't tell the public, "Tell us what is happening." Not to mention Dr. Miller here. You are limiting his opportunity to be the president of the college by not even addressing him as such. So I do hope that tonight, as soon as possible, you inform everyone, please let them know what the status is of the current president, superintendent of the college. Second, I also very concerned about the arbitrary way by which the board decides to allot time. The last time the Academic Senate came up here to speak on a very, very important matter, we were given 10 minutes. The veterans were allotted a total of 50- The veterans were allotted a total of fifty-six minutes, probably a little bit more. Other, I was looking at past meetings that we've had and where you have allotted sufficient time to everyone else. So my question is, why do you limit the Academic Senate's opportunity to present information that's very, very valuable? It's going to be affecting over 25,000 students. It affects every single employee on this campus, but yet you refuse to allow us more time. Trustee Martin, within his diligence, wrote down a lot of information, and then he recapped it. Some of that information was incorrect, not on purpose, but it was incorrect. When I stepped forward to try to correct the matter, I was not allowed to do so. So you chose to vote, to make a vote based on erroneous information, as well as not providing us the sufficient time to present a very valuable argument as to why the winter intercession should be here, which, from my perspective and many other faculty, have all said the same thing. Despite the fact that you are elected and you're supposed to be here with open minds, the fact that you limited us, everyone has the same idea. You already had made up your minds prior to this, and that's very, very disappointing to see elected officials not give us the opportunity to provide you the information to try to make the right decision. Instead, your minds were closed. You already decided what to do, and it was very, very evident. I am disappointed in that. With Melissa up here, the same thing. Right away, this is the first time it happened. When the veterans came up, when everyone else came up, no one said, "You have ten minutes." No one limited their time. Go ahead, speak unlimited time, but the moment a faculty member comes up, you are limiting their time. Why? I don't see the reason why there is such a lack of communication. Scott Lay, during a technical visit, he emphasized communication. I've extended my hand to communicate with all of you. I presented the survey. Nothing has happened. Just this past week, in class, we're talking about the Iran-Contra affair, excuse me, the Iran hostage crisis. And leading up to the event, Jimmy Carter, the President of the United States, made a statement. He stated that Iran is an island of stability in the troubled Middle East, and a few weeks later, he was overthrown. Whether or not you're doing this on purpose, whether or not you're not aware of the situation, this college has a lot of problems. We are not going to succeed in our accreditation, and yet no one here has been willing to come up and ask the Academic Senate, "What can we do to pass?" That should be utmost on your minds, but it has not happened. Statement was made earlier regarding cost, that there's no money for faculty salaries. Well, let's see. Suddenly, we found money to have this, what, $400,000, something like that, for this vet center. There was money also spent for surveys, surveys to tell you the campus climate. All you had to do was ask me. Ask the faculty, ask the staff. We did it. We had a forty-five percent rate of participation, in which everyone stated, "There are problems on this campus." Rather than accepting that, the board decided to spend tens of thousands of dollars on a survey that told you the exact same thing, with a lower participation rate. If you want to fix the problems of this college, the Academic Senate, Classified Senate, everyone here is willing to work with you. We are willing to work with you, but changes need to be done, and I do hope that in the very, very near future, we are able to begin the process of putting this ship on the right course. We've had some very fruitful discussions with Dr. Miller, Dr. Bell, and hopefully with the new administrators we can, but without that communication, we are guaranteed to fail. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention to you that usually items put on the agenda by the board, their board action items, have unlimited debate and discussion compared to other items, so...
But why are we limited to ten minutes?
Well, the reason, first of all, I gave you the opportunity to come and speak, and it was my decision that both sides should speak, and I wanted to set a time limit to move the board along. I don't want these meetings to last all night, and that was the reason for it.
That's perfectly understandable.
And I agree with you. Tonight, we should have limited some of the other discussions.
But it's been like an entire year. Is there a policy that limits us?
There is no policy. It's up to the board.
Again, it's an arbitrary matter.
The board control, you know, first of all, the board is not a shared governance body, and this is a board that is elected by the public to make decisions, and we have to run the meeting to expedite what we're doing for the public, and we do the best job we can.
I understand, and I agree with you. The meetings should not be lasting as long as they do, but when you limit one's opportunity and not another's, then there tends to be this perception of bias, and that's what I was here to tell you.
Well, I don't think there's any bias, and I do agree with you. I think tonight, the village debate should have been limited. Trustees have the information in front of them, and we should move and vote perhaps a little more quickly, so I agree with you in that area. But the board is the governing board of this college. They can speak as much as they want. They could limit debate as much as they want, but I think each of these members do try to be fair.
And just once again, it's a perception. If we go back to when Trustee Martin was in place, I was sitting over there. You arrive, I'm sitting over here, and now we don't even have place cards anymore. I can't explain that.
Because, to be honest with you, and I've been in politics a long time, I just didn't think it was appropriate to have the shared governance sit at a body that is elected by the people to make decisions. This is the focus of what we do, and I'm sorry that you don't like it. Maybe the next president will bring you back, but this president's not going to. I just think it's best that you're where you're supposed to be.
Providing you information that you need.
And other community colleges do the same thing, so I'm sorry, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And finally, Dave Douglas.
Thank you, President Fellow. Welcome back, and you look relaxed, too.
Thank you. I didn't want to come back.
Not much of a report tonight. The manager here, we're lining up to work on Welcome Day and getting ready for the fall semester, so we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
And I'm glad you're going back to the deanship. I think you did a great job there.
Thank you.
Okay. We have in front of you the proposed future board business meeting dates. Any questions?
I think we need to meet on August 20th.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, we will.
Because for one reason, we agreed to move our self-assessment and have it due by the last meeting in August, and since it's not done now, I think we should follow our own policies, and so I would like to move that we have a regular meeting on August 20th.
Thank you. Second.
We will. Anybody object to that? We were going to plan to do that. Thank you for bringing it up. Proposed future agenda items. I do want to mention one item that Ms. Wa has brought up many times, and I discussed it with her before the meeting tonight, is trying to modernize. She was telling me that, do you want to talk about it?
No. Just showing my demo.
I don't know, and she was telling me that the other boards of trustees send packages electronically through iPads, and I'd like to, I just think it's silly to have somebody driving around on Friday nights delivering packets, and our students are so much into sustainability, how many trees we waste by that.
The administration is looking into a system called Board Docs and will be making a recommendation soon regarding that. We would likely, will likely want to speak to the board officers about the implications of that and what it means to the individual board members in terms of their, the way in which they transact their business.
Okay.
President Fellow, I would like to make a comment on it before we go further. I just have, I was on two accreditation, you've heard this so much, is sick. Two accreditation teams this year, very unusual, one person, two teams. I looked at governance in both times, and I looked at their board minutes. The one who's on Board Docs has their minutes and all their agenda items and so forth, was like fifteen times as long as the one that has their documents in hard copy. And if we do make this decision, I think we should be extremely careful, since it's so easy to put the kitchen sink on it, that we not then overburden the board members. And I'm telling you, having to go through and read those minutes and see page after page after page after page, things that really weren't important, I think there's a real danger, and so I would like for us to be very careful about that.
Ms. Wa.
Well, I'm not sure that having those extensive minutes is necessarily one of the maladies of being on an electronic board package, but Dr. Mann and I have both been, well, and I still continue to be on the league, and we receive all of our information through Board Docs. Makes it much easier. It's very easy to search through information and to put in a little electronic sticky note to mark your items and your comments, so, you know, and so when President Fellow asked me, frankly, all of my school districts, they all have electronic packages. They all operate with electronic packages, so I do highly recommend that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to Board of Directors' comments. I forgot that. And Mr. Lewis, welcome aboard. I haven't met you yet.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Thank you. Dr. Salvage.
No announcements.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Levo for sitting down with myself and Ms. Brown and a member of the Pasadena School District Board of Trustees about the dual enrollment program. She was very gracious to spend her time and very thoughtful and careful in explaining it, and I just wanted to thank you very much for putting that effort in.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
No report.
Ms. Wa.
Okay, just quickly. So September 20th, the API, Asian Pacific Islander Women's Leadership Conference will be held here at PCC, so I'll send all of the trustees an invitation in case you want to forward that to anyone in your group. Even though it's held by the API Women's Leadership, anyone is encouraged to attend, and I think it's a good agenda. I also want to thank Dr. Miller and Ms. Colros for helping to host the new South Pasadena Superintendent and his management team's retreat here at PCC, and they gave them a great orientation on PCC and the connection with South Pasadena. And also, I recently had a chance to attend the opening of the Dusset Hotel, which is the brand-new first boutique hotel here in Pasadena, and it was opened by Kin Hui, who is the chair of the president's giving circle here at PCC. So he has a fabulous chef from Langham, so I wanted to congratulate him.
You can take me to dinner, though. Okay, thank you. Dr. Mann.
I have nothing to report.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Mann, first of all, for the work she does on the Policy Revision Committee. She works very hard, and she does ride Berlinda and myself to get the job done, and we appreciate that. And I want to thank Ms. Brown for taking over while I was in Europe teaching this summer, and appreciate that. This meeting's adjourned.